Okay, good. All right, thank you for joining us. I'm going to call the special meeting, virtual, special virtual meeting of the City of Elgin, Texas City Council to order at 6:02 PM. And then we'll start with a roll call and if you'll go, starting with Ward one and up.
Benson here.
Gonzalez?
Gonzalez here.
Ariaga here.
Lopez here.
Brazier?
Brazier here.
Smith here.
All right, certify that we have a quorum. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Jones is absent. And would I hear an emotion to, to excuse his absence?
So.
Okay, I've got a motion by Brazier and a second by Dennis. Now we'll call for a vote.
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez here.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Oh, sorry. Dennis, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Jones is excused. I don't know why I'm making notes since it's all recorded, but it makes me feel better. All right, then if we can move on to the invocation, Councilmember Lopez, would you like to lead us in that tonight?
Yeah, I got you. All right, cool. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for letting us be here even though it's under different circumstances than what we thought would be here. Still, that has given us wisdom and helped us make right decisions for the city and just be with everybody during this tough time. We're not in a normal situation right now, but God always asks for your strength to help us get through and we ask this in Jesus name, pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. That'll move us into public comment, which I believe there is none. Is that correct, Tom?
You got the hearing first, Mayor.
Oh, that's, sorry, didn't read that right.
Yeah, we don't have.
Okay, nobody signed up. All right, I'm going to recess the regular meeting at 6:04 and move us into the public hearing at the same time. Item number one, under the public hearing, the public hearing on an ordinance amending section 36.12, acceptance of subdivision infrastructure, repealing all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for savings clause and repealing conflict ordinances, conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Is there any background on this, Tom?
Yeah, just real briefly, Mayor, this is a procedural item where we're recommending both from the city engineer and the city attorney's standpoint as well to make a procedural change in how we accept new infrastructure that's constructed as, as part of new developments under our code and, and in past practice, although I don't know that it's been in uniform. Technically, the city council has gone through the steps to formally accept public infrastructure that's built inside of residential developments that sends it over to the city. What's more consistent with standard practice and as I said, recommended by the engineer and the city attorney is that that authority to simply be granted to the staff that when all the infrastructure, meaning streets, waters, sewer drainage are built to our specifications, then the staff that has the authority to accept that infrastructure, it just eliminates a extended amount of time for the developer and in a formality that's not uniform every place at all. So it's a procedural change, doesn't cost anything. Really thinks that it'll, it'll help streamline development and, and not bog down council agendas in the future. So this, this hearing is on that amendment, which is later in the agenda under new business.
Sure. Anybody got any questions? As it relates to the public hearing? All right. Seeing nobody has signed up to speak on this issue, we will close, close the public hearing at 6:06 and enter back into the regular meeting at the same time. And there is no public comment, correct?
That's right, Mayor. We didn't receive any request or either in writing or any request to address the council.
All right, then we'll move on to the city manager's report, number one update on the City of Elgin coronavirus, Tom?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, sorry. Sorry, Mayor Cannon, can you put Brad in at 6:04?
Okay. So, would like to amend, let the record reflect that Councilmember Jones is not absent or he's excused for four minutes of tardiness, I suppose, and he was arrived at 6:04. Is that what she said?
Yeah, that's when he clicked in.
Okay. Welcome, Councilmember Jones. It's best you've ever looked. Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we just wanted to, we don't have a big detailed report tonight, but mainly wanted to provide what update we could on the current status of, of operations and impacts here in Elgin due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And, and as we need to deal with that, this is as much an opportunity for the council to ask any questions or request additional information. Once again, rather than go through a very lengthy detailed report of everything we're working on, we're just give you a little recap here, but encourage anybody ask any questions or, or ask us to expand on anything that we talk about. I just want to mention that, that I hope you had a chance to review my memorandum dated May 1st. It's in the packets, which, which kind of describes gentle kind of nudge back towards normal operations, our first step for the city and, and and how we'll move to a kind of a modified, what we're calling a modified level three, which is increased readiness that reflects kind of our initial steps to move an operations back, which includes bringing all employees back or trying to get most all employees back. We're not to the point where we're opening facilities yet to the public. But that, that memo gives you a breakdown of, of each department and, and the trademarks that we're following the general guidelines to bring people back. It's still going to be, you know, we, we talked about as a staff level, we moved in immediately into a, a level two, threat level two in our plan all at once, but as we move back to normal operations, these issues are going to be assessed almost a case by case basis, department by department basis and, and not going to get in a hurry, but at the same time, we want to get on a healthy path towards returning our operations to normal. Overall, we continue to say that operationally speaking, from the city's perspective, relatively speaking to what we hear around the state and around the country, adverse impact on operations has been minimal. We think we've been able to continue to maintain all base services with little adverse impact for citizens and, and our employees. I want to say from our employee's standpoint, as we try to go back to normal and move to this modified threat level three, we are, we're taking every reasonable precaution to make sure employees have a safe environment to work in. And I can tell you to today, operationally speaking, there's not one city employee has lost a single day of pay through this whole event, which, which means, you know, there's been different amount of production frankly from all the staff, but we maintain the commitment that, that council made in the beginning, take care of our employees and not have them try our best to keep them from, from being hurt financially and, and we've been able to do that to this point in time. We continue to get also a similar positive response from the business community in town. Overall, our, our general response from, from our citizens and from our businesses here has been one of great cooperation and, and education. I think they've demonstrated by and large that they want to share in understanding and the safe, understanding the issues and the safety of our community. I think that's indicative by the fact that, that we've seen our restaurants not all immediately go back to complete operations, opening their dining room and those that have have done so. We believe in compliance with the rules and in a safe manner. One thing I did want to mention that we, Pam, can you go to the next slide there, that we had talked about at our last meeting? The, the city's economic development corporation had, had some of their funds to a emergency grant program to help support businesses in town. And this, see on your screen is the 19 different businesses in town that all received a $2,000 cash grant from the city. Or it's the, frankly, there's a review process. At the same time, there's very little strings attached to this money. This, this really helped people in many cases with their just basic expenses, rent, utilities, things like that. So I think certainly from the staff standpoint, we're, we're pleased with the response we got and how that worked. In addition to this direct financial support from the city, the Main Street program also provided 13 different $100 grants to businesses in town. Now that, those grants would help marketing, sending out their message of alternative ways to support these businesses and, and online and such. And so, so again, we're, we're not continuing just to support our businesses through education and verbal support, but we're actually providing this direct financial support, which I think's been very successful for us. So also on the business end of things, we continue to see development activity, as we're going to talk about a little bit later in the meeting. We've seen some fairly obvious slowdowns in a couple areas, but by and large, the projects that we've been working on for the last few months haven't slowed up very much. We continue to see residential development come forward. We continue to see commercial development coming forward and, and gaining permits and approvals. It remains to be seen again what the ultimate impact on that'll be. Obviously, our development, our residential development, we've talked about from day one is driven by housing demand in, in Austin, in the Austin area. And as long as that demand reignites itself and, and keeps going, then we'll continue to see development projects happen. One thing, one sidebar I did want to mention, council, part of this level three, if you caught the, our modified level three, we're, we're moving back. We've agreed to, our commitment is to stay in the same operational mode that we are right now through the end of May. And that's similar to governor's restrictions and, and other restrictions that are in place now. We'll be reviewing those at the end of May to see if we can, what the conditions are and how we might take another step towards further opening. But right now, we have scheduled, we are planning on a schedule. If you saw that, I emailed this to you before of having our council meetings through the month of June, be, continue to be virtual and online. And I heard from a couple of you about in support of that. So I just want to make sure if that's our plan now, if there's a, but obviously that's up to the mayor and council to decide when we'll have those meetings. There's a different train of thought about that. Let me know. Actually, for us, it, it operationally, we think there's, assuming we don't take a big step backward that, that diverts our attention. We're hopeful that the upgrades that we want to make to convert the, the civic center to our permanent council chamber can be done in time for our first meeting in July. So right now, that would be our target. We continue to have virtual council meetings through the month of June. And then ready for that first meeting in July, assuming we continue to progress in a similar manner to what we had the last week or two, that we might be in position at the first of July to start having council meetings. And as you know, even at that point, if we're still trying to achieve social distancing, it'd be a lot easier to do that in that room as this one, but it's not so much that we're committed to having that meeting in July. I just want to make sure we're all ready to, and agreeable to continue in these virtual meetings at least through June. And then finally, just wanted to mention that, that even though we continue to see governor's orders, restrictions lessening more and more statewide and certainly countywide, will staff intends to continue our social distancing measure, message, will continue to be active on social media and, and all the other forms of communication we've used. We, we think it's still important to reaffirm the message that people need to be safe, they need to be smart and, and wear masks where they can, social distance where we can, if, if we're going to stay on the path that we're on now. Basically, that's the big overview I had. Again, given as we did last time, I, I Amy Miller to give us a little feedback from her perspective as our public information officer. And then I'm going to have Chief South offer a few comments and then open it up for general questions or comments from the council. So Amy, can you jump in?
Sure. Hello, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all virtually tonight. So we are continuing to provide a variety of information at the COVID-19 website to both individuals and employers and businesses in the community. And we would certainly encourage everyone to especially look at the governor's strike force to reopen Texas website link.
You with us?
Link that's provided there. It has a variety of various levels of detailed information for individualities, governors. They are still asking folks to do social distancing, to do self screenings and stay and, and to stay home if you are sick or, or have symptoms of being ill, wash your hands, use the face coverings, avoid groups of more than five people. And if you are over 65, to simply stay home as much as possible. Those are the recommendations from the governor's office. I did take off my camera because I think my internet's struggling a little bit with the weather and all to keep up. We've had a great, great, okay. We've had a great response from our business community in terms of seeking information and really all being unified to serve the community, but to also be safe. The nonprofit community has been very active. They've been working with each other weekly to find out what needs are and share resources and help each other, help those in our community who need the most help. They're seeing increased activity at the community cupboard, the Baptist church cupboard, advocacy outreach through Elgin Drive a Senior. All of those entities are, are all dealing with, with new needs, but they are also seeing a lot of support from the community and new volunteers and, and donations. And so we'll continue to work with those folks as well and trying to help with that, those connections and helping each other be effective. But there have been, there are some really great stories of the support throughout the business community and the nonprofit community as everyone is dealing with the various impacts of COVID-19. So I'm available for any questions if anyone has anything in particular.
All right, Mayor, if you don't mind, let, let Chief South jump in here and then we can, we'll be glad to answer any questions or comments you might have. But Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. There's two dashboards that I watch pretty regularly and that's the one from Bastrop County and the one from DSHS in Texas. We currently have 116 cases listed in Bastrop County with 117 at DSHS, which is kind of unique because it's usually the other way around. The, the other parts of the Bastrop County side are down right now, but DSHS has us at 73 active cases with 44 recovered. I did a little digging and looking more. There's 53 households in Bastrop County that have been reported with COVID. 45 cases are in Elgin right now with individuals and 22 households are affected. When we look at that in our overall population, that only results in about 0.3% of our overall population within the city that's been affected by the actual virus. So we're, we're doing pretty well there. We anticipate the OC to be open for quite some time going forward. It doesn't, we don't anticipate it resolving itself or moving downward. There'll be more testing sites coming along. I'm not sure if we're going to have additional testing sites. We just completed one last Tuesday where we provided 68 tests with the military that they came in through TIDOM and that process worked really well. So if we get that opportunity again, we'll, we'll obviously look forward to doing that as well. And I have, I'm able to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, Mayor, that's, that's pretty much our recap. Like I said, I know there's, there's a lot, a lot going on. We've shared what information we've had with council about it. At the same time, we'd be glad to try to provide any details or respond to any questions or comments anybody might have.
Questions, Council? Okay. Is there anything to report on, on top of the investment, quarterly investment report aside from presenting us the report?
I, I don't think so. Pam, you want to go to the next slide on that one? Go to the next one.
Now, any questions from council?
Yeah, just, just that. I don't, I don't think, Charles, do you have anything to add other than what's in the report?
No, actually, the only notable thing is that our weighted average to maturity interest rate has gone down significantly. It had been running around 2% or higher, but with the, it generally follows the Fed rate and during this period, the Fed dropped its rates. That's why the, the rate, the, the lamb on these is down to 1.07, but other than that, we're in pretty good shape. We added a few hundred thousand dollars to the balance, which will need every penny of it going forward to the end of the fiscal year, but overall, we're generally in good shape and a cash position.
Cool. All right, questions from the council on that? Anything on departmental monthly reports?
No, Mayor, I don't have any more unless anybody, you know, on both the last two items, unless anybody had any questions from here, anything else you want to talk about.
Questions from council? All right, we'll move on to the, thank you, Tom. Somebody has something?
I do have a question. Yeah. Are we, is there a plan to have a budget workshop this year, even if it's virtual?
Yes, we've got, Suzie, we've got the budget calendar. We actually, what first up will be our five-year capital plan. We'll be presenting that to council at the first meeting in June. Then we had scheduled our first budget workshop the second week in June. And then, but the, the budget work sessions will actually be, well, they'll continue to be later and after August when we present the budget at the first meeting in August. But, but we'll be starting the five-year capital plan next week. At least one work session scheduled for the budget at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We received Sue's amendments there to the last, last meeting's minutes for April 23rd. If nobody has any other questions, I'm looking at that right, right? There's only one item on the consent agenda? Then I'll undertake a motion to approve the, approve the minutes for April 23rd, 2020 meeting with Sue's amendments. Is that a motion by Brazier?
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right. Motion by Brazier and a second by Benson?
Yeah.
Are there any other question, questions? And we'll take a vote, too.
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. And well on to new business. Item number one, an ordinance annexing adjacent and contiguous territory to the City of Elgin, Texas to wit 18 acres of land lying in and, and being situated out of the Henry Martin survey, abstract 518 in Travis County, Texas, and being fully described in exhibit A attached here to providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. These actually, these next two agenda items are connected. They both have to do with property owned by the First Baptist Church out on County Line Road where they have plans to, to build a new church facility, but they have now requested annexation. Next slide. Requested voluntary annexation. This is a copy of the petition to request to be annexed into the city so they can get the full city services. And then the next slide shows the property itself. This is the location. It's actually right on that where the big curve takes place there on an FM 1100 right across from the, adjacent to the high school campus, but running along FM 1100 and part of it on County Line Road as well. So this first item is the ordinance to accept the petition for annexation to annex this property into the city limits. And then the next agenda item is to assign that property to City Council Ward number three.
All right. Is there questions on the, the first item with the ordinance? Annexing? Yeah.
Tom, is there going to be a big expenditure to the city to get them annexed into the city?
No, it shouldn't be. It, this, this action is simply bringing that raw land into the city limits. We continue to work with them on their, on the, the impacts of their development costs and procedures. Obviously, this is a project that's, that's not exact, won't have the exact same impact as, as a big residential development that we're seeing out there, but, but they'll have to follow all the same procedures to appropriately support the costs related to their development itself. Now, I, I will say, obviously, it'll be tax exempt property and so it's, but so you have the issues of dealing with providing services, but, but it's, you know, it's a whole different animal than if it were retail store or a housing development with 300 homes on it. It won't have the same impact on our services. And, and but we're satisfied it'll, what, what their plan is, is something we can work with and, and they'll share appropriately in the cost, just like anybody else would.
Tom, will they, will they have any obligation to the straightening out of that intersection when we get that underway?
Well, part of the issue that we're working through with them is that as we are doing with every developer that's, that's coming on, any, any property developer, regardless of the project they're building, we, we'd need them to partner with the city to help us address transportation needs that we have on County Line Road. This is a piece of property that, as you can tell from this map, it's frankly a very prime location for development. And so we, we expect everybody out there, anybody who's changing the use of their property to help us absorb the costs associated with that roadway and other transportation improvements. Now that straightening out of the curve project ultimately Now, that straightening out of the curve project ultimately will be a tech stop project. So I don't believe, the property owners aren't going to have any obligation, direct obligation for that, that kind of road cost. But tech stop will, and it remains to be seen. We've done these, done these projects before. It, it, it could, it'll be interesting to see how this curve works because it, it, it will be text out's responsibility. At the same time, our, there could be a point where we may not want to continue to wait on text out to build it. And the city might want to figure out its own funding or partnership with text out. But, but at the end of the day, the, the property owners along there won't have to pay anything associated with the, the tech stop project. That answers.
Yeah, any, any special consideration on, say, the development fees? Isn't it usually per foot of frontage or whatever? Are we considering any waiver on that for them?
Not a waiver, but certainly a reduction. Every, every property, every developer has the option to, when it comes to those, those impact fees for, for, in this case, for County Line Road. Every developer out there, we've, we've made a calculation of what we think the per foot cost is. And they have the choice to either pay that cost or to conduct their own traffic impact analysis study that, that proves up that, that they should pay a lesser amount to this point. And, and that per foot cost that we've established is based on our experience with these residential developments. So, so far, all the residential developers have simply agreed to pay that per foot, per foot cost and forego their expense to do the traffic impact analysis. But if this property here, in, as an example, is only going to be a church, for a church facility, obviously, their impact of having services two or three times a week is going to be completely different than, than a housing development with twelve hundred homes, like Bron Holmes Development has. So it's through the traffic impact analysis report that, that, that a, a, a different type of fee, a different type of contribution is supported and warranted. And I can't tell you, the church has already commissioned that study. So we're, we're literally right now in the middle of conversations with them. I think we all agree again that they can easily warrant paying a lesser fee. But, but it's fair as that everybody pays some kind of fee to help us offset that. But I think the important thing to remember is no matter how much, how many fees we draw from everybody out there, and we particularly will need, it would be best for the school district to be part of this. It's still not going to be enough to pay for the road. The city still have to contribute. So all of this effort to get these contributions from, from any, any property owner who changes the use of their property only helps us reduce the pressure it would put on existing taxpayers that'll have to make up the difference in that cost. So this, this is something that we've talked about with ACC, with the school district and with private developers. And, and, you know, the First Baptist Church falls in that same category. A different formula, I think, is warranted, but, but paying a fair share of that cost is, is reasonable, too. And that's, that's what we're, the premise we're working from.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion by Penson. Who was the second?
Lopez.
All right. I've got a motion by Penson, second by Lopez. And if there's any other questions? All right, we'll call for a vote, Mayor.
Penson, yes?
Vega, yes?
Lopez, yes?
Dennis, yes?
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes?
Gonzalez, yes?
Sorry, I skipped Brad.
Is Brad, is Brad voting? Are you able to vote, Brad?
He's live.
Well, it looks like he's on, but he's muted. All right, we will. Cannon here, passes unanimously. Thank you. So I, on to item number two, if we need to reflect the minutes differently on Brad's attendance, it doesn't really matter. He's been excused and, and noted here. So I think the old AG will have to give us a, a break on that, that one. Yeah, if somebody has a problem. Item number two, an ordinance assigning newly annexed property to City Council, to the City Council Ward area area number three, providing for severability, severability clause and providing an effective date, providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances or resolutions. Do we need any further? Anything further from staff on this? Are we clear?
I don't think so. The next slide shows the, the districts out there and where this will be.
Yeah. Questions, Council? Then, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So moved by Lopez.
Second.
That, was that Mary?
That was Lopez.
Vega.
Vega, I'm sorry. Sorry. Motion, motion by Lopez and a second by Vega. It's amazing how, how, how much y'all sound the same. Okay, then if there's no questions, we'll call for a vote.
Okay, yes?
Dennis, yes?
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes?
Gonzalez, yes?
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes?
All right.
Vega, yes?
Sorry. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. And then that'll move us to item number three, a review and discussion, review, discussion and consideration of a cost sharing agreement between the city of Elgin and Ranch Road Pepper Grass LLC, the developer, regarding relocation and construction of a fifteen-inch water line in the Pepper Grass subdivision. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This item, actually, items three and four are associated items as well. You'll recall the Pepper Grass development is a residential development with two hundred and eighty-five single-family lots. It's right in the same area, will be catty-cornered from the New Baptist Church across County Line Road east of the, the high school campus. This project has begun site development and is ready to move forward. And both of these items are, items three and four on the agenda here are to approve cost sharing agreements with the private developer where we've assessed the infrastructure project that the developer is, is building for their development, but have reached a partnership agreement with them in both cases where they'll actually increase the size and capacity of the lines that they're putting in their development beyond what the city needs to serve other needs the city has outside of their development. So, and when we make these arrangements with the developers, obviously, it's appropriate that the city pay the cost difference for that installation. And in this particular case, next slide is, is a wastewater line. Oh, yeah, I guess I just wanted to mention this again. Where the, the one circle there is the First Baptist Church project we just got done discussing two hundred and eighty-five homes for the Pepper Grass on the corner, twelve hundred homes for, used to be called Altessa, is now Harvest Ridge, and then four hundred and seventy-five homes in the Homestead subdivision, which just this week received a sign off by the staff to acceptance of their infrastructure to go to final plat. They're ready to start building homes in the Homestead subdivision. We'll start that now. And it, just a sidebar to that is an example what we're talking about for this first phase alone of the Homestead subdivision represents dollars worth of infrastructure, public infrastructure that the developer has installed, which will be conveyed to the city. So we continue to gain assets from these developments as we go forward. And then the other development there is, is two hundred and eighty-nine lots. It's a Stone Creek Ranch. It's not, that project is not moving as quickly as these other three. But, but we've got these, the Harvest Ridge project continues to move forward. So we think there's a good chance that these three different developments will start on the construction of what will ultimately be two thousand homes right around the high school campus out there. All of these, we, we still think will start construction yet this year, this calendar year. We go to the next slide, please? So this is the wastewater line. Just gives you an idea where it's going. We're actually, what's required by the development is, for the Pepper Grass development is a twelve-inch wastewater line. We've asked them to upsize that to the fifteen-inch line, which will provide the service needed by Homestead and other, and, and Eagles Landing if it ever goes to phase two. And of course, with both of those projects being inside the city limits, all the homes built in both Homestead and Eagles Landing will pay full impact fees to offset this cost. So this project, the total cost associated with this project will come from impact fees. Won't be any impact on the operating budget or the general fund. So it's, it's kind of a win-win for both of us. It's these kind of projects, exactly what we assess impact fees for to serve other areas outside the city. And, and it's certainly in both cases here are projects where we're getting the private developer to help us build something that we would otherwise have to build ourselves.
Okay. Questions from Council? All right, and do you want us to? Do you want our vote, vote for the consideration on this? Tom?
Yes, to approve the, the cost sharing agreement.
All right, if, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the cost sharing agreement as presented.
Brazier, two.
Dennis, seconds.
Okay, motion by Brazier and a second by Dennis. Any questions? All right, then I'll call for votes, too.
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes?
Cannon here, yes?
Penson, yes?
Vega, yes?
Lopez, yes?
Dennis, yes?
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Item four, review and discussion, review, discussion, consideration of a cost sharing agreement between so is that the, the cost sharing agreement or the reconstruction, Tom?
Cost sharing agreement.
Okay. So item four is the cost sharing agreement, correct?
They're, they're two different agreements.
Okay, okay. All right, sorry about that. Item four, review, discussion and consideration of cost sharing agreement between the city of Elgin and city, city and Ranch Road Pepper Grass LLC, the developer, regarding a construction of a sixty-inch storm drainage line in the Pepper Grass subdivision. All right, Tom?
Mayor, again, same situation. On the next slide, you'll see it's, it's a storm sewer, storm drainage line that'll go down the middle of Pepper Grass and, and end up in the Elm Creek. One thing that's different about this, this, we're expanding this construction to actually, this is designed to handle storm drainage off of what will be the new County Line Road. As you know, we have plans and these developers have all contributed to the cost to expand County Line Road to five lanes. And by doing this, partnering with the Pepper Grass developers at this time, this will convey all that storm water through their development into Elm Creek and, and, and will serve the new roadway there so that all the developments will, the water will flow to the roadway and then run out through that drainage system. So we're actually getting ahead of the road project with this, with this partnership with Pepper Grass. And, and the cost from this will, as we said, as we talked about last, our last meeting, the Homestead development will be making their first contribution to that road fund when, with their, the final plat approval, after which will, that will create enough funds to pay for this cost sharing. So again, both are examples of new development paying not only for the costs for their existing development, but for paying for added costs to expand the city's system. So, so again, no, the cost for this, we paid out of those funds. No direct cost to, or impact to residents or taxpayers.
All right, questions, Council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the caution agreement as presented for the sixty-inch storm drain.
Second.
I've got Mary on the motion. I think I heard Vega on the second. I'm sorry, there's a lot of feedback. I apologize.
Yeah.
So I've got a motion by Penson and a second by Vega. We'll call for a vote, Mary?
Penson, yes?
Vega, yes?
Lopez, yes?
Dennis, yes?
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes?
Gonzalez, yes?
Cannon, yes? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Item number five, an ordinance amending section thirty-six point twelve, acceptance of subdivision infrastructure, repairing all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for a savings clause.
Mayor, this was the item we had the public hearing about earlier. Don't have a whole lot to add. This is basically as a code amendment to eliminate the formality of having the council pass a resolution to accept improvements and, and allows us to, the staff to do that administratively. Doesn't change any of the standards or expectations or requirements. Just kind of lessens, one less thing for council to deal with and lessens bureaucracy a little bit for the developers.
Okay. Council got any questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion. I'm, I'm, I'm motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Dennis and a second by Penson?
Yeah.
Any questions? And we'll call for a vote, Forrest?
Dennis, yes?
Brazier, yes?
Ariaga, yes?
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes?
Vega, yes?
Lopez, yes?
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. On to item number six, resolution of the city council, the city of Elgin, Texas, to approve a lease purchase agreement to finance acquisition of hardware and software to automate document imaging, data hosting and retrieval services for city, city documents generated by all departments and conducting day-to-day operations and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Is this, was this what we talked about in the prior meeting, Tom?
Actually, this is, I'm gonna let Charles speak to this one, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct on that, Mr. Mayor. This is the second half of that project that we introduced at the last meeting where that, the original part of it was to actually get all of the document scan. This part of it is to acquire the hardware and software and the services, which is SaaS for the next three years to be able to store all that data and retrieve it and, and manipulate, we need to do. This is the agreement. We're working with CompuData and they're in an association with HPE, Hewlett Packard, financing, ARM, a few in an association with HPE, Hewlett Packard, financing ARM, a few Hewlett Packard, and they gave us a pretty good rate and they're used to doing these types of operations. So we got a rate of three point three eight percent over three years. And the total amount to be financed is a million eleven, one, sorry, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It'll be financed over three years. At the end of that, we'll have to come to some, another arrangement, but this will get us through the first three years anyway.
Okay, council, do you have questions? We've done similar agreements like this. Do you have any questions specifically for, for Charles on this agreement? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a resolution, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
Someone?
A second, Mary.
I've got a motion by Kastner Vega and a second by Penson. Any other questions? Alright, then I will call for a vote. Is Vega?
Vega, yes. Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes.
Alright, that passes unanimously. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. I believe that wraps us up. Are there any, any announcements from staff? I've got, I've got one, actually. I'd like to, just, I think we all know by now, but I wanted to say it officially in the meeting that our thoughts and prayers and appreciation for many years of of dedication, dedicated work to the city of Elgin by Doug Prince. We no longer have Doug with us anymore, and our thoughts and prayers are with you, Sue, and, and the rest of the family. That it's gonna be a hard person to, to replace over there in the utility department. Anyway, I, of course, you know, you, we're just a phone call away, Sue, if you need anything. That goes for your mom and the rest of the family.
I appreciate it. And I, I'm sorry, sorry. One more thing. City staff was great through all, and they did an excellent job, and I appreciate everything.
I'm glad to hear. Does anybody else have a, have announcements?
Mayor, could we just backtrack a little bit? Are, are, just, are we all in agreement about the council meeting schedule? That's what I'm just trying to, to, we're, we won't have another meeting right now. The plan is that our next meeting would be June second. We'd be back on our regular, then be back on our regular schedule of the second and the sixteenth in June. And then we have June ninth is when we have the work session for the five-year plan scheduled, but are, are this working alright for everybody? I, I guess, I'm not, just wanna make sure that, you know, with all the development projects, what have you, coming on, we have to, it's better when we can plan in advance, so I, I, the even if we start getting dramatically better week to week, our plan is to stick to this virtual meeting through the month of June unless anybody had a different thought or suggestion or would rather see us do something different.
I think that, that's, it's pretty good for now. Not, not a lot of point in planning too much ahead right now. And any changes we can do, I think we could probably be pretty good on publicizing. Yeah, emailing that. Any questions or, or changes throughout the council? Would, would anybody disagree with that?
Nope.
Sounds good.
No disagreement here.
Yeah, maybe that's it. I guess I'm, just wanna make sure that's our plan for now. And
Yeah.
we need to change, we'll let you know. Or if somebody feels strongly about, I, I guess, I just wanna make sure we're walking the right line between trying to get back at the same time, not push too hard, that's all.
That's right. Okay. Well, well, thank you all. Hopefully, we'll be able to, to meet in person soon enough, but thank you all for, for your attendance and if there's nothing else, I'll adjourn us. Anybody have anything? Alright, so I'm gonna adjourn us at six fifty-six. Thank you very much, council.
Thanks.
Bye.